All right, we are live. It's 11:00 AM and this is the special meeting of District 21 Board of Commissioners, October 19th. We are back to Zoom and we are live streaming on YouTube. So, welcome any and all who are viewing us. And the meeting is called to order at 11:00 AM. And our first order of business is the roll call. How about that? Bruce Ansel. I heard Bosman Fisher Crawford.
Kimberly Mcmurray.
All right. Then we have Chief Ward, we have local Representative Scott Brown and our ever-present and helpful consultant Heather Logan. Been working her overtime. Flyers have arrived. All right, Volunteer Pension Board meeting, I'll call that to order at 11:01. We have minutes from the September 16th meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Second. Moved in second and any discussion? All in favor? Anamis, any other business before the Volunteer Pension Board Chief?
Sure.
All right, we will move to adjourn the Volunteer Pension Board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, unanimous, we'll open the regular Board of Commissioners meeting at 11:02 AM. And the first item is the approval of the consent agenda, which has meeting minutes from September 16th. The staff reports, which I'm going to ask the chief to give us a little more update since there were a lot of big items that I think are worth mentioning. The financial reports and vouchers, I'll read numbers in. Total revenue for September was $210,960.73. Total expenditures for October, $821,744.89. Direct deposit payroll, $326,164.40. Payroll taxes voucher, $68,069.15. Benefits vouchers, $288,543.21. Monthly expenditure voucher, there was a last-minute change to that. We received a credit card invoice of $27.39. We got it late and to avoid late fees, it was added into our packet after the fact. So, the actual number is $130,886.47. Again, that's $27.39 more than what is on your packets. And then the capital projects apparatus, $8,109.05. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, seconded.
Moving seconded. Does anyone have any questions or concerns before I turn it over to the chief to talk about his portion of the report? Okay, chief, you're up.
Thank you, sir. So just, yeah, to kind of go over the chief's report, maybe give you some opportunity to ask some more detailed questions. The portion of the 2022 budget is pretty straightforward. I'm building two budgets or we're building two budgets. One with, I call it one with and one without. I think what, what I'm talking about there kind of goes unsaid. So, as well as figuring out the district for cost and all of, you know, the associated needs that are throughout the district, I think later on in this meeting, you'll see as Chief Ward talks about, you know, some roofing repair and the condition of the training tower out of 63. The more, the longer I'm here, the more that Chief Ward and I have kind of a chance to explore and look at what's been done and what's not been done and look at the condition of our, of our capital facilities and capital items. We find more needs than we have. Levy lid lift update, I'm going to leave that. I'll let Heather touch on that a little bit later. I will though say that the Coffee with the Fire Chief meetings have been postponed until Thursday. We've just had some staffing and logistics problems here in the office and not been able to pull it off with the kind of success that we want to. I, there, it's kind of a private matter as to why. If you'd like to, if you need a further explanation, please contact me privately and I'll, I'll be happy to expand, but I, just the first three did not go off as, as we wanted to. We are hearing, I'm getting a lot of good questions via the internet, via info@nwfrs.com about the levy. We're replying to all of those, obviously. We've, there is great outreach going on. I believe that Scott might be able to speak a little bit more to that during his report. But, but really it feels like there is more public interest in what's going on. COVID-19 mandate is pretty simple. We met, we met the mandate. A hundred percent of our employees chose to be vaccinated prior to the mandate. Yesterday or last night at midnight, the thing flipped over and we're operating as, as we were three months ago. So our personnel update, just wanted to bring you up to speed on what everybody that's on probation is, is doing right now. Our four firefighters started in January, finished their pump class. They are, they're working, now they're working towards becoming drivers and operators, working on more advanced skills. They all just had their, also have had their six-month evaluations, which gives them more, you know, some targeted things to work on as they work towards their final and getting off probation, but they're all doing exceptionally well. Noah Silverman is our recruit that's up at North Bend. He's our, our new, new hire. He's about halfway, he's three quarters of the way through the academy. He gets done on November 4th and he'll be coming back and working on B shift as an extra to kind of get his, his final tuning to go on shift. He's been doing great. He's hanging in the classes, super competitive. His test scores have been up in the 97s and he's running about the middle of his class. So, it's as typical at any kind of a public safety academy, you've got the, really the best of the best are competing against each other. And probationary firefighter Kat Stewart is, she's a lateral hire, came to us from Linden with multiple years of experience. She's on C shift now at a station 63 and by all accounts, from both her and from her company officer and her senior firefighter, she's doing great. She's been a great addition to the team and everybody really enjoys working with her. And every time I've seen her, she's got a smile on her face. WSRB will be visiting this year. It says we can meet with them between January and October. I'd look for a September meeting. Because that, we've got, we've got some more rebuilding to do, especially when it comes to training and things like that. So we want to give ourselves as much time as we can before we go for a reassessment. I will say that that might look a little different this year than it has in the past, just kind of because of the way I do things and so it's not, it's not so much a warning, just that I'm, I guess maybe I'm a different guy and I, I am going to hold this to maybe a different standard and ask WSRB more, what can we do to get better as opposed to maybe showing them all the shiny things and how wonderful we are. I want to know, I want to know what our true needs are and I see that as a tool to us becoming a better department. I did take some time in my chief support to talk about firefighter Steve Latham. Trying to, trying to really, you know, I know I've talked to each, each of you about the fact that I want to make this fire district, make sure that our mission is getting accomplished, not just so that myself or the staff looks good, but because the mission is actually the most important part of the fire district and I work for the firefighters. I work for you as well, but, but they are what this whole thing's about and, and their service to the public. And so I'm trying to bring things to you so you can see what your people, the people that you've hired, the people you employ are doing. And one example here is firefighter Steve Latham. When he came on the district, it was, he's been here about four years, I'd say, and it was a little bit, it was just a little bit maybe chaotic, the way he was brought on and he saw a need and came up with a plan and brought it to administration. And what it was is he, when someone comes on now, when a group comes on, he takes time off of shift, we assign him to days and he, he mentors them through their first couple of weeks of administrative work and getting, you know, SCBA fit tested, getting your bunker here tested. And, and not just is he shepherding them from, from, you know, thing to thing, but he's spending that downtime between there and he's talking to them and he's answering questions about the academy and answering the questions about shift. And, you know, for those of you that have worked 24 hours before, it's a, it's a weird feeling to bring, you know, to bring underwear, socks, toothpaste, you know, a whole, a whole section of your life is brought to work. And if nobody tells you that before you, before you actually go on shift, it's something you kind of learn by trial and error. So, and what we've discovered is, is that the recruits then, they know if they get hurt at the academy, if, if anything happens there to call either myself or Chief Ward or Kelly Freeman. But what they're doing is they're getting a mentor and a friend from the very beginning. Immediately someone that they can ask kind of those, you know, hey, how do I navigate this thing? And, and what the feedback we're getting from the academy is that our recruits have been some of the best prepared ever that Steve is taking the time to have them throw their packs and don and off their gear. He's getting them set up for those first couple of weeks of the academy where you're kind of trying to learn a new culture. You know, some of these folks may have never marched before, may have never adhered to a kind of a rigid schedule, a kind of a parabilitary schedule. And Steve gets them on that schedule. He tells them what to expect. He tells them, you know, this is, this is what you're going to see in the first few weeks. And he gives them that leg up so that they're the front runners in the class and they can, they can settle in. And, and it turns out what we're seeing is, is that all our people that go up there tend to become class leaders because of the foundation that Steve builds. And so I just wanted to give him kudos and give him kudos in front of you guys that, that you can, you can see what you're, what kind of really awesome people we have in this organization. This is, like I said, this is a need that Steve figured out that we needed. He wrote up a proposal all on his own. He brought it to us and said, I'd like to do this. It morphs, he's, he's flexible and it's just been a really added benefit to our employees and and his, his peers thank him for it. And so I just wanted to give him a pat on the back and, and like I said, let you know what kind of awesome people we have working here. These many, my next thing, Lieutenant Leslie Smith retired after 24 years of service, both career and volunteer to the city of Blaine, District 13 and North Wacom Fire and Rescue. Then we'll have a small ceremony to recognize her, both her and Lieutenant Zilstra in the near future, but, but if you see Leslie or you're friends with Leslie on Facebook, please take time to drop her a note. Obviously, you know, it's, it's, it's hard leaving, although there's days I think it wouldn't be that hard. But it's got to be, it's got to be hard to retire and change your whole, change your whole life. But, but kudos to Lieutenant Smith. I just want to point out that she was a company officer in the fire service before fire service knew it needed female company officers. And she really changed the way a lot of her peers look at leadership and, you know, and I, I think that's pretty neat and that's something that she should certainly celebrate. We should celebrate alongside of her. She, she was truly a trail breaker in, in, in her career. The next thing is you see a Battalion 76 temporary position. Chief Ward had surgery and is out of being able to physically respond for the next few months. I spoke with Commissioner Ansel and just due to where we're at with chiefs in both us and Linden, as you know, we share, share Battalion 76 duties with the city of Linden. It was going to be down to Chief Bill Meyer and I doing one week on, one week off terms of Battalion 76. Both of our wives voted no on that. And so I went to Commissioner Ansel and asked if I could temporarily staff Battalion 76 on that, on what would be Chief Ward's week with some of our current commissioned officers. We talked about it. We decided that was a good, a good thing to do and they have really stepped up. They've had their first week already. They actually had the busiest week that we've had in a while and they did a great job. It's given them some good training, some good exposure to what life, you know, if we were to have battalion chiefs, what that would look like. It's, it's a modified battalion chief commission or position. It's not a shift commander, but it's, it's still giving them the idea of, of, you know, that kind of responsibility. So, want to thank Commissioner Ansel, my wife thanks Commissioner Ansel for, for letting us make that leap. It's, it's been, it's very nice to know that the district is in good hands in that third week. And it's been, it's been a great experience for our people. And the last piece is the training captain. We opened up training captain. My thanks to the union and your cat there, Scott. My thanks to the union for allowing us to open up the training captain's position to outside interests. We got five candidates. That, that testing process will happen in January, parallel to another lieutenant's process. But I thought it was great that we got five candidates from all over Western Washington and yeah, looking forward to get training up and running with the right person during the near future. So, sorry, that was kind of one long run on sentence, but does anybody have any questions or comments about what I, what I had or questions about anything?
I'm going to comment, believe it or not. It appears that our message on the levy is getting out way better this time than the last time. And I, I'm seeing information on, on every avenue and, and seeing some port in places in the community that we didn't see before. And I'd, I'd like to commend all of our personnel for the COVID-19 vaccine mandate, the fact that we were probably one of the first departments to be a hundred percent vaccinated. To me shows what kind of commitment our employees have and, and I'm very, very thankful that they went ahead and took care of that. I, I like the fact that we've got people internally like Steve Latham for helping out with the recruits. That's, that's awesome. That's one of the things that sort of kept me interested in being a commissioner here is knowing the quality of people that we have and their willingness to step up and, and go the extra mile. Leslie Smith, she was a huge help to me when I was first learning about this department and being a commissioner. And she provided me some, some valuable information as well as her community involvement. She was involved in a ton of things with the school district and, and I think she was involved in almost every public outreach project that the fire department had prior to COVID and her medical issues. So, thank you, Leslie, for, for all of your tireless work and hope she can really enjoy her retirement. Just as an explanation to the rest of the board, I think we all know that the workload on the chief is humongous and to have expected him to be Battalion 76 every other week was, was not even a question in my mind that we needed relief for that. So, if, if there's any blame you want to place on, why did we go ahead and pull the trigger on that? You can, you can send it my way, but I think that's going to provide some needed relief at the administrative level since we are a lean machine here. So, there's, there's not a lot of places to turn to, to, to get that. So, thank you for the long-winded report and I apologize for my long-winded response. Anyone else?
I'd like to make one comment on the chief's report on the WSRB. I just really appreciate the fact that your, your focus is to show the true needs versus the shiny things. That's kind of a typical response that I've learned to expect from you, you know, and I appreciate that, that everything's above board. We're not putting anything away. This is what we have. This is our areas that we want to improve in. And I appreciate you just being upfront with them, with that. And as commissioner, I appreciate that attitude. And I would echo what Bruce had said about the leadership of Lieutenant Leslie Smith. I mean, when things were really rough in the district, a few years ago, she was the one person that went out of her way to come to me as chair of the board at that time to offer support and was very much appreciated. And as a district, we're going to miss her leadership.
Very good. Anyone else? All right. So, we have the consent agenda before us. There was a motion to approve and seconded. We've had an opportunity to hear more and answer questions. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Anamis, thank you. Commissioner meeting reports. I have none. I'm sure that either John and/or Kimberly, did you have anything this time or was that last time?
That was last time.
All right, John, where are we?
So we had a 911 advisory board meeting. And all the, all the players were there. Right now, as it stands, after that meeting, we are still normal. Prospect is prospect and Wacom is Wacom. That seems to be the, the way right now. I expect probably at the first of the year, once we get some different council people and things like that, it will probably be another agenda item, but it's status quo and that's what we're looking for. So that item we can remove until it becomes an issue again.
Excellent. Thank you for staying on top of that and, and helping them understand the interest of the fire side of this picture. Any other commissioner meetings? All right. Legal issues, there's nothing new to report. We talked with our legal office actually before the meeting and there was nothing to report. So they are not in attendance today. We'll move to the local 106 report. Scott Brown.
Hello, thank you for having me. Yeah, a lot of the things that I was going to discuss have kind of been touched upon. So, I would like to kind of echo some of the stuff as well, though. The levy, we're, you know, going full board with that right now. Seem to be getting a lot of good feedback. I would like to give a special shout out. Thanks to Haley Erling Inger. She has planned a lot of doorbelling routes, has got the literature going, some sign waving dates. We've been getting a lot of good feedback on the doorbelling. Some of the biggest feedback is that most, most people's concerns was with property values increasing by 30, 40%. They assumed that the money, we, the revenue we were taking in was increasing by that much, which obviously isn't the case. So that was good to get a lot of that out there. As it's been going, the doorbell is going a couple of days and I've only heard of one upset resident, which is understandable. There's going to be some, so, but for the most, the majority of it's been really well received. Special thanks to Heather Logan for all her help with us with getting stuff going on of that. So, yeah, we got a few more doorbelling days coming up and some sign waving dates. So, and that is exciting about that. We put out over 200 signs this time, but just the generic vote yes for your local fire prop or levy. So that's where the levies at. We're just again, going to keep pounding that. As Commissioner Ansel said and Chief Vanderen, we're a hundred percent vaccinated. So, just want to thank everyone for doing that. Proud of all the individuals. So as of right now, that's kind of all I have. So if anyone has any questions or comments, I'm open.
No, I, I just would reiterate the, the fact that the people misunderstanding of how we get our taxes and what 1% means. I was with a, a group of well-educated gentlemen the other night and, and the, the comment came up, well, boy, my property value went up. What are they doing with all this extra money? You know, and I, and I said, 1% is, is $64,000. If we have 34,000 people in our service area, that's two bucks a person. You know, that's, that's nothing. So, for the year, if, if this doesn't pass. So, I mean, there, this, obviously the I-747 was 20 years ago and people don't understand and realize the impact it had and what it means. I mean, I'm all for people determining their destiny and where their taxes go, but the misinformation about the fact that just because the, the real estate market took off and, and their value is, is doubled, we don't get that. We get 1%. And in, in some cases, that would be no more than $5 a year from the average homeowner. So, the fact that, that we have gone backwards and are probably anywhere from 5 to 10% behind inflation in our ability to maintain a budget is impacting our ability to provide the, the type of service that, that we're striving to get to. So, thanks for getting out there and, and helping educate the people.
Yeah, one other thing is there's the trick or treat on the berm on the 30th. So we'll have a booth there. So if anyone wants to come out and hang out, we'll be there. So, thank you.
All right, appreciate it. On to unfinished business. The Levy lid lift is our, our first item. And you know, the information is out, the flyers are out, the ballots are out. I was at 63 the other day and saw on Sunday and saw several people dropping their ballots in their, in the box on Sunday. So, you know, we're, people are voting. So, get out there. Heather, welcome. Do you have any words of wisdom for us?
Words of wisdom. Don't take your foot off the gas. The election is two weeks from today. If Wacom County follows like they did for the primary, we'll know by about 8:15 that night. Of course, that's all virtual. I'm delighted that the union is so visible, the signs, the doorbelling, well done, local. And you commissioners, if, you know, take those extra flyers with you, you run into anybody, you even vaguely recognize from the gym, give them a flyer. If, just because the flyers are out and the ballots are out, this is not the time to let up. The group has done an incredible job of raising public awareness and that was probably the harder part to come in after 12 years or in de-force case, 27 years and educate the public, Commissioner Ansel, about that whole tax thing. That's huge. And on top of that, oh, by the way, we'd like more. So just getting this energy going is something that'll carry you through other issues like, you know, maybe an RFA in February or April.
Appreciate that. Chief, anything from you? Anyone else have any comments? I did have a chance to drive not only District 21, but District 4 and was amazed at the number of signs that are out in areas that I wouldn't have thought they would be. And also just reinforced to me how darn big our service area is. It's a, it's a, it's a day drive to cover our district. So, we, we really need this thing anyway. Contract for services with District 4. We did not have any more recent meetings. I think part of this is hinging on what happens on November 2nd. And there's, well, their board chair is up for reelection this cycle. And so there, there's a potential gap for their board chair because after the certification of the election, his position goes away and doesn't start until January. I believe he's running unimposed. Is that correct? Correct. So I mean, the expectation is he'll be elected January or start January one. I, I believe they intend to potentially make an interim appointment to fill that position. So we'll, I, I think we need to wait till the third or fourth before we gear up for that discussion. And I, I, are all of our budget numbers in now chief, or are we still massaging some of those? I guess, well, there's, there's two scenarios, right? There's, there's a, a scenario if the levy doesn't pass and there's a scenario if it does and that that's for both of our districts. So there, there's several moving pieces here that we are unknowns. And so do you have anything? Did I, did I confuse everyone enough on that? Anything else chief that I may have left out on that?
No, sir, I think you got it.
I mean, the, the bottom line on that contract is to pretty much be status quo with, with the financial number update. And how that contract payment will, will look.
Correct. That's, that is for, for what we're hoping to be a one year or less agreement. I think that is the best use of funds as opposed to spending time having two attorneys craft dueling agreements and then hammering it out.
Right. And, and I, and I still believe that the direction of our board is to move forward with the RFA regardless of the outcome of either election. Is that the understanding of the rest of the board? Are you guys all on board with that? Yes, yes, I'm seeing heads shaking, Kimberly, John. So that's the plan. Law enforcement response. I included the letter we sent to Watcom County EMS. And that's in our packet. Mike Hilli responded quite quickly to our letter. Thank you Jenny for helping us get that out timely. We sent that on the twenty first. He replied on the fourth. And I believe, you know, the chief is, is working on some input as far as what we want to see happen. And that would be an additional unit or resources to respond to these types of calls that, that we really don't have the time, resources or training to address. So chief, you're meeting with the Chiefs group to come up with a proposal perhaps?
Chief, Chief Carlson and I, Assistant Chief Carlson from District one and I are meeting together. Come up with what, yeah, what is fires response going to be to the? What, what do we want it to look like? So we're gonna, we're gonna work with the Chiefs group and with the, you know, Chiefs Association to figure out how, how do we as a county want to respond to these kind of calls and, and how are we gonna fund this immediate twenty percent increase in call volume? Or, you know, responses to this. So that's, that's what we're working on.
Right. There, there seems to be some money available potentially to get this thing off the ground. Our request was to do it sooner than later. So as quickly as we can get at least something up and running that would really benefit all of us. Not just twenty one, but, but all the fire districts in Watcom County. Any questions, comments, concerns on that? All right, facilities. We've got some aging stuff. I have been around the district, kind of poking and prodding and looking and yeah, we, we're gonna have to really address some, some key issues. Some of it is just painting and, and regular maintenance, but sixty threes. I said from the day I started here, that station is in dire need and, and the needs just continue to crop up. So I'm going to turn this over to Chief Ward to talk about the roof issue and the tower issue at sixty three. Chief. Your
Your mic's off.
Doesn't look like it, but. You got the, you got the infamous muted computer.
Chief Ford, why don't you come over to my desk and you can give your report from here? Thirty seconds.
You got the same Microsoft bug I had.
Mine's working, we'll just go with that.
Mr. Ansel.
Morning.
Do you mind if I jump off?
No, Heather, thank you for your time. We appreciate all the efforts you've done on behalf of the district, but also your help with the, the local and boy, I'm double fingers crossed here.
Fingers crossed. Call anytime.
All right, thank you.
Thank you Heather.
Thanks Heather.
Thank you Heather.
Okay, Chief Ward. I know I would like you to tell me some good news, but I know that there isn't any. So let's just hear it.
In, in some respects, it's not as bad as, as we had anticipated, especially for the roof at sixty three. We had Axiom come out and their Division seven, seven series. Not series, their portion of their, of company came out and walked through the entire facility on the roof from stem to stern, top to bottom, side to side. Drains, scuppers, the, you know, everything that comes off that roof was looked at. You have the report in your packet. I, Chief and I were relatively pleased that the cost wasn't as high as we had, had, had somewhat anticipated. The roof itself is marginal at best. We'll be able to maintain that for a few more years. They have some preliminary needs that need to be done and that's already being scheduled right now. PO has been, been placed and it's just a matter of getting them scheduled to come up and, and, and do the work. Most of it is just ma- minor repair stuff. Not quite sure on the scupper system yet until they dig into that, but that'll, that'll probably be the worst of, of everything. Just because of the way that drains and, and leaks back into the building like it has for years. Hopefully they can fix it and we can remedy that for a few years and at least know that that station is dry inside rather than it, every time it rains, we, it rain inside the building. But that's, that's pretty much it on the, on the, the roof itself.
Just for clarification, we're gonna go ahead and move forward with that repair and then enter into a maintenance agreement with that company. Is that?
Yes, sir. They're gonna come in and do the repairs and then they'll work on a, an annual maintenance program with us where they'll either come in quarterly or semi, semi annually to check on the condition of the roof and do repairs as needed to make sure we can get the longevity out of that building that we need.
Is, is this an example of why you don't have a flat roof in Washington?
Uh, somewhat, yes. It's also, also where you should have had a contract a few years ago and, and maintained it as we progress. But, you know, it is what it is. Well, we're, we're working forward to it to make it better now.
All right.
And as far as the tower, the tower. The tower has been used for many years as a training tower, which is what it is. It's also the hose tower where we use, use it to, to hang hose once we clean it. So it's constantly wet inside. It's not heated. So over the years of, of, you know, cold temperatures, thaw freeze, thaw freeze. We've seen a, a number of cracks develop in the outer part of the structure as well as internal. We had the stairs replaced a few years ago just because of the condition that those were in. They were decaying to the point where it was unsafe. We noticed some in- increase in cracking this year. And so did some digging and found where the, the previous inspection was located at. And that kind of brought Chief and I back a little bit on our heels. And so we, we asked a, a new company that, that does those inspections now. The company that did it, Wilson's Engineering, no longer does structural inspections. And so we went with King Works. That was who they recommended. And so they came out and did an inspection. You should have their inspection paperwork in your packet as well. It's kind of, kind of somewhat gloom and doom. It's either fix it or tear it down. It's kind of the, the, the overall consensus. We can still use it. But it's not in the best shape. So currently we are looking into having Tiger Construction come out. Cause again, that's kind of company that, that King Works recommended to do that kind of bid process as far as we demo it. They can give us at least a baseline idea of what it's going to cost. We also contacted a, a masonry company in Seattle that does a lot of repairs to turn of the century buildings and older construction and stuff. So to kind of know the ins and outs of how to repair buildings like what we've got. And so we're gonna look at both options and see what, that's, that's fits our, our situation. We do have to move forward on one portion of it and Tiger's gonna get us a company that does mitigation as far as hazardous materials. We need to have that investigated before we can do any kind of repair or demolition of the facility. So it's something we're gonna have to do no matter what to determine whether we have asbestos in that tower and any other kind of hazardous materials that are built into the, into the concrete and brickwork there. So a lot of it we're finding is just, is just freeze thaw, water getting into the brick infiltrating into the, into the rebar, rotting the rebar. So it's, it's, you know, an age-related deficiency in that building. And, and so we're moving to see which way we need to really progress from here.
Are we still doing training in, in, in the tower?
We're not doing any, any water infiltration training in there at all, Commissioner Fisher. We're just doing, if anything, they're doing lathering from the outside and, and hose extensions into the building, but not using water.
So we find asbestos, then everything shuts down in the tower. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, it'll, it'll be completely off limits if, if asbestos is located in that building.
Thank you.
And, and it's my understanding if we do demo that tower, that it, it is separated enough from the existing structure to not create a problem with the rest of the station. Is that?
I, that's my hope, you know, in, in just talking with the, the King Works engineer, he seemed to think that they could detach it without doing damage by cutting the, the con- or the brickwork that goes into the building that comes through that area. So again, I, I haven't had Tiger Construction out to do the full inspection yet and to give us a preliminary as at the, at this point.
It's not on the National Historic Registry, is it? We have to deal with that.
If Birch Bay creates one, we might be in trouble.
Okay, all right, all right.
I'm sure the experts will do like a cost benefit analysis, but I'd be surprised if it's worth putting money into that tower. I, I think, you know, just looking at it from, you know, an outside view, let's get rid of it. You know, there's really some big advantage to us keeping it and putting more money into it.
Yeah, I, I think the plan, Rich, is, is to, to get the, the two estimates. You know, I mean, repair means opening it up, polishing rebar, re-mortaring the whole tower. You know, like I said, if it was a historic landmark, we'd probably be looking at something like that. But I, I, my gut says tearing it down is going to be the cheapest and safest alternative. But we'll wait and see what, what they say. It just, it just highlights where we are in our equipment and facilities in this district and why we, we need to move forward with some funding help. So. All right. Anyone else?
Can I back up a little bit?
Yeah, what's up?
Um, that law enforcement response is also going to be a seminar topic on Friday at the Commissioners Conference.
Excellent. So, yeah, so I believe John, Scott and Kimberly are gonna be attending that conference.
Yes.
So we would really appreciate a, a report from the three of you when you get back from that. I think I'd be curious to hear on that topic, but there's also, I'm sure, gonna be a lot of other valuable topics there as well. Thank you. All right, any other questions about facilities? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. And good luck with your shoulder. All right, Chief, anything else you need to add about facilities? We've got the sixty three update. Are we still, I mean, the, the painting got done, the doors look marvelous. We've got potential looking at fascia and painting at sixty one. Was there something else that I missed or was there another painting project?
We did, we got a bid for Station twelve as well. The admin and the, the firehouse.
All right. We'll pass that on to District four. New business. We talked about WSRB and looking at a September date potentially. Anything else on that, Chief? Okay. Policies and procedures. We do have the policy zero four zero zero point zero three two six point zero zero. I love those policy numbers. On mandatory vaccinations, it was put in our packet last month for review. And it's before us. So I'm gonna look for a motion to approve that policy.
So moved.
Is there a second? So it's moved in second and any discussion? This was drafted by our attorney. It was, we've had a month to look at it. My understanding was that Labor had the chance to look at it. Chief, where are we at in your opinion?
Sorry, can you say your question again?
I mean, it was, it was drafted by our attorney.
Yes.
Using sort of the latest information available. It has had the opportunity to be looked at by the board. And my understanding Labor got a chance to look at it.
They got a copy of it, yep.
And we are ready to move forward to approve it unless there's any objection or comments or concerns.
It's the rules. I, I don't, yep.
And, and again, this is, this is part of that whole process. We receive funding. We, in order to keep kind of up on the up and up and, and meet all of our requirements, we need to have a policy and procedure.
And there's, and there's, nobody should be surprised when we have to meet, do this again for the federal mandate.
Okay.
That's still making its way out of.
So there, there, there's other superseding rules that may come forward.
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
This may, this may be adjusted very shortly. This may, this may be adjusted very shortly. Um, because of the presidential announcement, proclamation, whatever word you want to use, that anyone that takes in Medicare or Medicaid funds is going to have to adhere. And that's not, that is more overarching than this state.
Okay, so this doesn't even address that at this.
Nope.
Okay, all right, all right. Uh, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor of approving policy zero four zero zero point zero three two six point zero zero mandatory vaccinations?
Hi.
Hi.
Scott?
I, again.
It's unanimous. Um, correspondence, um, we've had, uh, multiple, um, items in our correspondence, um, a lot of it is from the assessor's office re- regarding, um, the levy information and, uh, how much it costs to put on, uh, ballot measure and so forth. Um, I think it's more just FYI information that if we don't pass our levy, we'll need to lift our, um, point eight six or whatever it is to one percent by resolution, which we've done in the past. And then Public Works has told us that they don't have enough staff and they may or be delays for clearing storm issues this winter. There were a bunch of thank you notes, again, appreciate all the hard work. It seems like every time our crews go out, we get great feedback from the public, uh, and appreciation um, for their, their time, effort and compassion. And that, to me, says a lot about the kind of department we have. Anything else under correspondence, chief?
No, sir.
Anybody have any questions about the correspondence?
I think the one, uh, the one piece of correspondence that concerns me is the one from Public Works and how that could affect not just response, but, um, are folks getting to work? Um, that, that concerns me. They, and if you haven't read it, basically they have half, they have half their, um, plow, uh, certified plow operators that they're anticipating will be able to work this winter.
Well, John, there you go. When you're not driving bus, maybe you can get on a plow.
Been there before.
All right, um, board meeting, um, our next, uh, scheduled meeting is the eighteenth. Um, which would be the third Thursday again. John, is, is eleven o'clock doable?
Yeah, this should be doable. I appreciate it.
Is everyone okay with moving from one to eleven? We'd have to call it a special meeting again, but it would be on our normal day.
That's okay.
Good. See ya.
All right, so we, we, pardon me?
I said, thanks.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So, um, the November eighteenth meeting will be at eleven AM and, uh, Jenny will get the special notice out, um, for that. Um, okay, agenda items for the next meeting. Um, I guess we'll get a report on the, uh, the levy lid lift. Uh, we may have some information on the contract with District Four. I guess you can still give us an update. What is, what is your timeline on that law enforcement response? Proposal, chief, do you have meetings coming up before our meeting, or?
We do, we have, yeah, we have at least two meetings coming up before then, so I'll be able to give you an update.
Okay, so we'll have that. And I, what's the timeline on our facilities? Um, when are they gonna come out and look at the tower, do we know?
Um, we don't have scheduled dates yet.
Okay, all right.
We're, we're working with Tiger Construction. They're, they're on a big, their, their inspection guy, I believe, uh, head nod Sean, if I'm right. But, uh, they're, they're on a big project in Seattle right now.
Yeah.
Nope, that's not right, okay.
It's gonna do sign language.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, okay, well, we'll keep facilities on there. He's, I, I see him moving over.
Yeah, he's gonna come. Oh, that's it, okay, they're out of state, that's right, they're out of state right now.
Okay.
Um, so the, like, like Chief Ford said, the crews are using it again, they're just using it dry. And we're not introducing any water to it, so.
Right, right. Um, WSRB, I think we're good on that for now. Um, and then a public hearing, um, if we need to do the special needs resolution to one percent. All right, um, signing of documents will be as usual. If you can show up, uh, at Station Seventy-two and, and sign your stuff, that would be appreciated. Otherwise, make arrangements with, uh, the chief and, uh, anything else from anyone?
Yeah, chief, I'll be out there tomorrow after, uh, after I get done in the morning sometime.
All right, everybody good? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Meeting.